Okay, I got two o'clock. Are you ready? All right, she's nodding heads. All right, Madam Clerk, let's call to order the city council meeting for April 12th, 2021. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
Me.
Here.
There.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We can't start a meeting without a lawyer.
Did he say here? City Manager Cruz.
Here.
Give a quorum, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's openings ceremonies invocation. Our pastor is not going to make it. He had another commitment come up. So Councilman Dare, would you mind giving us the invocation today?
Be honored to. Lord, we come to you and we thank you for today. I pray for the families, the businesses, first responders, and Lord, all those in our community that are walking through what this last year has been and what the new year is becoming. Be with our, all of our health, be with our hospitals, what needs to come. Help us make wise decisions as we move forward. In your name, amen.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Abbott, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
I sure would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I just looked over and noticed in my computer the 10% power. There's something about that, otherwise you're gonna lose me. Okay, Madam Clerk, public comment. You have a disclaimer to read first?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. Public comment will also be open for public hearing items 10.1 and 11.1. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comments, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been addressed. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if you would like to participate in public comments, please press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. It looks like I do have some public comment. The first public comment will be from telephone number 775-329-7638. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Alexis Motorex with the Nevada Chapter AGC, representing the commercial construction industry in Northern Nevada. I'm here today in support of item 9.4 on your agenda. We appreciate the opportunity to have met with your staff to discuss the industry's concerns with the construction hours currently in code. The safety of our members' crews is the primary reason we support extending summer, summer construction hours to 5:00 AM. Midsummer, summer temperatures are in mid to high 90s. Crews are working in direct sunlight in long sleeves, jeans, and boots most of the time. To be able to work earlier, cooler shifts is incredibly important to maintain the health and well-being of the men and women working in construction. Secondly, the quality of projects is impacted. In order for concrete to cure properly, it must be poured under the right conditions. Temperature, humidity, and wind all factor into determining the best time to pour concrete. An earlier start time will help ensure the concrete cures at the proper rate, which directly impacts the quality of the finished project. And lastly, having the ability to request a temporary use permit for up to 30 days as opposed to seven is also an important component to this code change. The current process is costly in terms of both time and money. There are several factors that may necessitate a TUP. Working in an occupied building, minimizing impact on vehicle and pedestrian traffic, or working on a time-constrained project, to name a few. Although the staff report indicates this would only apply in the summer months, we respectfully ask that this piece be considered year-round on a case-by-case basis. Having more flexibility will result in projects getting done safely and more efficiently. We encourage you to vote to initiate changes to the relevant section of code, and we look forward to working with you, your staff, and the public on finding reasonable outcomes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alexis. Madam Clerk?
On the next public comment, Mr. Mayor, is from telephone number 775-358-0171. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Mac Bybee. I am the president and CEO of the Associated Billers and Contractors. I am also calling in support of business item 9.4. I won't repeat what Alexis just said, but we are in, we have the same opinion of the code and the, and what we would like to see what the outcome is. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mac. Madam Clerk?
I'm showing no additional public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If you are out there and raise your hand right now, we'll, we'll take on. If not, I'll give you about 15 seconds and we'll move on. Nobody else? Okay, let's move on to agenda. Item 5.1, approval of the agenda. Looking for an approval.
Who to approve?
Got a motion by Captain Anderson. Second by, by Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, although a favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Item 6.1, approval of the minutes for the Spark City Council meeting and budget workshop for March 22nd, 2021. Looking for a motion.
I go ahead and move, move for the approval of the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting and the budget workshop for March 22nd, 2021.
Looking for a second.
A second.
Second from Vanderwell. Motion by Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Okay, items, announcement, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest. And item 7.1, Professional Land Surveyors Week. Who was doing this one? Mr. Anderson?
I'm gonna go ahead and read this, sir.
Thank you.
So whereas the historic profession of surveying has provided answers to questions of land boundary determination since the earliest days of civilization, and whereas surveyors were instrumental in creating property boundaries of the United States, providing citizens with enjoyment and privilege of property ownership, and whereas professional land surveyors are uniquely qualified to locate on the ground what is expressed in words in legal documents defining property boundaries, and whereas land surveyors work with other dedicated professionals to provide the best possible solutions for modern-day problems that serve the interests of the public. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 21st through 27th, 2021 as a Professional Land Surveyors Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have someone here from the surveyors?
Mr. Mayor, it does not look like we do. We were supposed to have Justin Moore here, and I do not see him in the attending section, so we do not.
Okay. Well, let's move on then to item 7.2, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
I have that one.
Yes, you do.
Whereas, you know, problem. Whereas residents of Sparks called 911 or non-emergency dispatch for help in emergencies for other assistance over 177,000 times in 2020, whereas our emergency communication dispatchers are the first contact for a person in crisis and are knowledgeable, highly-trained employees who are closely with police, fire, and emergency medical personnel. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Sparks Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas Sparks residents enjoy a high standard of public safety because of the emergency communications personnel who apply their expertise in dispatching help to ensure public safety. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby proclaim April 11th to 17th, 2021 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And joining with the city council and acknowledging and thanking our public safety dispatch supervisors, Cherie Terry, Maureen Diet, Mary Holbrook, David Brown, and Lydia McCoy, and dispatchers Lisa Buckles, Shelley Burkhardt, Denise Wagner, Mayor Mary Hale, Lori Howard, Stephanie Buck, Maika McYen, Christopher Luciano, Amy Moore, Shirley Campbell, Alicia Maral, and Samantha Cunningham. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Bam.
There you go. And I see Lisa Brown is here.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. For the record, I'm Lisa Brown, the Service Manager for Emergency Communications. Thank you for reading that really wordy proclamation. This is something that we're lucky enough to be recognized annually for by the, the city council, so we appreciate that. And that the city gives just a quick minute to recognize our dispatchers and how hardworking they are and how truly fortunate we are to have such dedicated folks willing to work long hours and stressful shifts and do a fantastic job every day. So I appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, and we appreciate what you guys do for us also. Okay, let's move on to item 7.3, National Rebuilding Day. This is Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna read the proclamation for National Rebuilding Day. Whereas Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada is hosting its inaugural National Rebuilding Day on Saturday, April 24th. And whereas the mission of Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada is to revitalize neighborhoods by providing safe and healthy homes for its most vulnerable neighbors, including seniors, veterans, people with disabilities, and families with young children. And whereas collectively, the affiliates of Rebuilding Together, a national nonprofit organization, complete 10,000 projects annually at no cost to homeowners, thanks to the help of generous funding and more than 100,000 volunteers. And whereas Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada acknowledges that by making improvements ranging from the basic to major home rehabilitations, accessibility modifications, energy-efficient upgrades, and community landscaping, varying issues such as health, the environment, the economy, and housing can be connected as part of a positive chain reaction that develops into permanent, sustainable change. And whereas Rebuilding Together holds partnerships with Nevada's business, government, and philanthropic communities to assist low and moderate-income homeowners, so they can continue to live in the comfort and safety of their own homes. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, we do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2021 as National Rebuilding Day. And I believe that they have a presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Pace, you have a presentation for us?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council, Councilmen, for giving us this opportunity to have this proclamation and just give you a few highlights of our organization. I'll just take a moment here to, um, there we go. Um, as Councilman Bybee mentioned, we are Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada. We are a brand-new nonprofit. Our mission is to repairing homes, revitalizing communities, rebuilding lives, and our vision is safe homes and communities for everyone. This is a national organization. We are a new affiliated chapter. The organization has been around since 1988. They are the leading national nonprofit to repairing homes. There's over 130 chapters. Southern Las Vegas has a chapter that's been open for over 25 years. They've been very supportive in our growth, so we appreciate their, their help. The national organization has, has served over 6 million people and over 4 million volunteers have mobilized to take care of these repairs. And one of the impacts that is profound is that 90% plan to age in place, and so we have been able to support that, to be able to allow people to age in place. As mentioned, we are going to be serving older adults, veterans, people with disabilities, families with children of low and moderate income. Our eligibility process, we will be going through collecting documentation. They must own their own home and plan to live in their home for at least two years. We will collect their mortgage, their title of, of their home if it's free and clear. Their insurance and their property taxes must be current. And this is actually the HUD income eligibility. It just changed on April 1st, so we, we weren't allowed to get you the, the current information. But the one person in a home is about 44,000, so we have a nice range to be able to help quite a few neighbors. What we're going to do is repair homes using the national organization's eight principles of healthy homes. And when we do an assessment, we'll be looking at 25 critical health and safety priorities. We'll also be looking at strengthening communities by helping with community projects. And this we can do by rebuilding lives. The foundation is safe and healthy housing for everyone, and we'll do this at no cost to the homeowner. As mentioned, the eight principles are to keep, keep it dry, keep it clean, keep it pest-free, keep it safe, contaminant-free, well-ventilated, maintained, and thermally controlled. As we all know, those are features that we all want in our homes. Just a quick rundown of how to contact us. And as mentioned, we are going to be having our rebuild day, National Rebuild Day on Saturday, April 24th. We'll be helping a Sparks homeowner. If any of you'd like to come out and see us, we will share our, the address with you. We will be there between 8:00 and 12:00. We'd love to see you, and thank you for this opportunity to, to help and for the proclamation.
Thank you. Welcome to, uh, welcome to Northern Nevada. Any questions from the council? No questions from the council. Oh, Mr. Dare?
I, I just think it sounds wonderful. I know we have many different families that I think could definitely utilize what you're talking about, so welcome. And I just want to make sure, so if we, we know of somebody, the numbers you just had, we can just connect them that way, and then you guys go out and assess yourself for what can or should be done?
Yep, yes, that's right. We'll take the application, collect the documentation, do the assessment, and then arrange for the work to be done. And just so you know, we started really working in January, and we have, we've done about 12 homeowners. We've helped 12 homeowners so far.
Is the work done by mainly volunteers, or is that, do you guys?
Well, during COVID, we've been utilizing skilled labor. But the event that's on Saturday, we'll have volunteers for that event, and following all social distancing guidelines, masks, gloves, and whatnot, will be outdoor. It will be an outdoor event.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Katie, I do have a question. Where does your funding come from and how many homes do you anticipate, or what is your goal for this year to be able to help?
We have funding from the Nevada Housing Division, Wells Fargo, and Charles Schwab. We are in the middle of sending out some more grants. Average home price, home repairs are right now anywhere between 2,000 and 5,000. So that's a typical gauge of repairs. We've repaired two roofs. We have water heaters that we've replaced, some flooring and ceiling, some plumbing issues, and then some carpentry work so far. So it will depend on our funding, how many neighbors we can help, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Katie, could you do me a favor and could you share the, the location and once again, the, the information on the work you're gonna be doing on the home here in, in Sparks with our city clerk?
Yes, I will send the address to the city clerk, so it can get on your schedule, because we'd love to see you.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Hey, anyone else? Well, thank you, Katie. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, moving on to item 7.4, Fair Housing Month in Sparks. Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, April 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Housing, Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in this, in the sale, rental, and financing of housing and prohibits discrimination on the basis of color, of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familiar status and handicapped those classes protected by Title VIII and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures. And whereas Nevada state law also prohibit, prohibits discrimination on the basis of ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. And whereas it is the solemn and sworn duty of the government at all levels to protect and defend the rights of all its citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens diminish the rights of all. And whereas organizations actively work to ensure equal housing opportunities for all people in Nevada to freely choose where they want and can afford to live, and the City of Sparks supports these organizations in pursuing fair housing for our families. Therefore, now therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Sparks.
Okay, now Clerk, do we have anyone here from Nevada Fair Housing?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, let's move on. 7.5 and 7.6, Mr. Cruz. You can unmute.
Let's unmute myself first. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Cruz, your city manager. I here to announce two vacancies. The first one is a, on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, there is a, a single vacancy on that committee for a partial term ending November 1st of this year. Applicants must have a performing arts background and be residents of Washoe County. Applications for that position will be accepted until April 30th at 5:00 PM. The other position we have an opening for is on our Civil Service Commission, a single vacancy there for, also for a partial term that runs through June 30th of 2023. Applicants cannot be city employees or related to one within the third degree of consanguinity. Applications for that position will be accepted until April 15th at 5:00 PM. If you're interested on serving on either one of these boards or any other committee in the City of Sparks, we encourage you to, to fill out a community service application. And that's available online is the, is the best way to get to it, and that's at our website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. And that get involved is all one word there. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee, fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay, thank you. All right, item 7.7, Presentation on Soleful Seeds and Proposed Neighborhood Garden on the Our Place Campus. Do we have someone here to do this presentation for us?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm showing that it should be DeShaffer or Erston Witten, and I'm not showing either of them in attendance in this meeting.
Okay. Is this, I'm just looking at it here, is this PowerPoint?
Yes, it is.
All right. Well, we probably have to push them off till the next meeting then. I'd hate to do their PowerPoint for them. Okay, let's move on to 7.8, Presentation on the Sparks Fire Department COVID-19 Vaccination Efforts. You gotta have someone here for that.
We do. They're on their way over.
Appreciate.
Here we go. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. Division Chief and Emergency Manager Sean McEvers before you today for the record, in front of you to appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the COVID vaccine efforts that we've been doing here with the City of Sparks Fire Department Clinic. And if we could just have the presentation come on up. Let me see if I can should be able to bring it up here. Are we okay there?
Yep, looks good.
Thanks, Mayor. I have two of us today to present the update for you, myself and Captain Tyler Gayton, a vaccine coordinator. So we're gonna take a team approach to the presentation for you today. As we, as I met with you and gave you a quick update in the first part of December, we come before you today to kind of give you the status of where we're at. I just wanted to do a little bit of a quick background. It was back in November of 2020 last year that we really started pulling off the shelf our Sparks City Point of Dispensing Plan. This plan has been part of the city for numerous years, and we pulled it off the shelf, updated an MOU with the Washoe County Health District, and started to prepare for the delivery of the COVID vaccine. At the same time, we were working with the state of Nevada and the Washoe County Health District in the vaccination playbook and how that would evolve with the prioritization lanes and the different groups that we would be targeting. Of course, along with the City of Sparks pod plan, it's rarely stated that we would be standing up for vaccination of city employees and their families in case of any pandemic. And then we also knew that as it evolved from the state of Nevada with the other lane dealing with the general population. So we had the essential workforce in the general population. At that point, Sparks Fire Department worked hand-in-hand with the Washoe County Health District and the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services to become a provider clinic, if you would. And so we had to go through some online training with the DHS and get a fridge, become part of a provider to accept the COVID vaccine, of which we did achieve that goal right at the first part of December. Looking into the amount of workload that it was going to take to accomplish the goal and to also monitor and order all of the vaccine, take delivery of the vaccine, the accountability for the vaccine, all of the aggregate reporting that needed to take place for all of our clinics. Also, reporting those to the Nevada Web IZ for all of the patients that were receiving the vaccine and stuff. We knew right away, and I identified that we would need some assistance. And so with the fire department, we flew out to get a volunteer in, and at that point, we chose Captain Tyler Gayton in late December to come in and take over the vaccination coordinator position for us with the City of Sparks. And Captain Gayton has done an outstanding job with his team with that. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Captain Tyler Gayton to give us an update as we move forward.
Thanks, Chief McEvers. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Thanks, Chief McEvers. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. Mr. Mayor and City Council members, uh, for the record, Tyler Dayton, Captain Sparks Fire Department, currently signed as the Vaccine Coordinator, as, uh, Chief McEvers had mentioned. Um, so I'm just gonna kind of go through what we've been doing since I came on board. Uh, like he said, basically at the beginning of the year, um, some of the numbers and some of, uh, like I said, some of the things we've accomplished. So in order to accomplish all this, you can see it took, uh, Chief McEvers' position, uh, myself, the Vaccine Coordinator. Um, and currently, right now, I have three dedicated data entry personnel, um, which I utilize that are pods. Like Chief McEvers was saying, to enter the, uh, patient's information into the Nevada State Immunization Portal, Web I Z, um, these are individuals that are currently assigned to light duty. So it's pretty easy to bring them over and utilize them. Um, I also have four additional data entry personnel. Um, these are line personnel that we're utilizing on their days off to come in and participate for our pod clinics. Um, I have a total of twelve vaccinators, um, and EMS recovery standby people that I can utilize during our pods. Um, and we use a lot of help from the Washoe County Health District, um, and the volunteers that they provide. Currently, we're doing clinics right around two to three times a week or as necessary. We're currently working through a lot of our second dose pods, um, this month. And then we'll pick back up sometime around April nineteenth to resume first dose pods, at least to get us through the end of this month. Um, we are currently utilizing the Sparks Parks and Recreation Building, which is at ninety-eight Richards Way. Um, and we also utilize the Al Storson Community Center during spring break, um, when the ninety-eight Richards Way facility was being used. Um, we have had some mobile pods or some pods off-site. Um, we've done one at the Nugget where we vaccinated about two hundred and eighty employees at the Nugget. Um, we've also done a lot of the city employees when we did P D, we went to the police station to do them. Um, and also when we did the ten work employees and some of the utilities employees, we did them at the ten work facility. Um, so you can see down below, like I already kind of mentioned, we've vaccinated a lot of the city employees. And we've flown it out to every city employee, so they should have all gotten at least one or two emails, allowing them the opportunity to, to sign up and become vaccinated if they chose. Um, we've also done a large Washoe County School District pod. And if you notice, that's the picture right there on the presentation, uh, where we vaccinated around four hundred and ten Washoe County School District employees. Um, we've also brought ten law in and we vaccinated them. We were assigned three daycares when we were in the education workforce lane. Uh, those were Sparks daycares. Um, and like I said, we've already hit the Nugget. And then just recently, we worked in conjunction with Reno Fire Department, uh, to vax, uh, to vaccinate the needy population over at six oh five South Twenty-first Street. Um, like Chief McEvers said, when I got brought on board, it was kind of one of those things where initially we thought we were mainly gonna be doing city employees, family spouses, things of that nature. Um, but we quickly realized that we thought we could, um, help out with the general population as well and working down that workforce lane. So, um, we kind of dedicated one to two days a week, um, hitting those general population, um, lanes as well. And that's kind of what we're working through now. So as you can see, this is as of just a couple of days ago, um, April tenth. So far, we've done a total of thirty-three pods, all utilizing the Moderna vaccine. Um, we've done roughly three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight total vaccinations. Out of that, two thousand three hundred and forty-five are considered fully vaccinated or have received their second dose of the Moderna vaccine. Little over thirteen hundred have received their first dose. Again, that's what I'm doing through this month is getting those second doses all done. Um, right now, we have six more pods scheduled through April, and I hope to up that number because again, I'm planning on doing at least two, possibly three more first dose pods, um, the week of the nineteenth. Um, when it's all said and done, we're hoping to have estimated over forty-five hundred total vaccines. And, uh, on the presentation right here, we have approaching thirty-five percent total vaccinations in the Washoe County. But I spoke with Chief McEvers today and we got ahold of our contact over at the Health District. And he said that number's currently closer to about thirty-eight percent of the, uh, total vaccinations in Washoe County. Um, some people have asked me about a standby list or what do you do with the, if you have extra doses at the end of the day? The positive kind of during the day evolved themselves into creating their own standby list. Because a lot of times we have people that will show up with a spouse or a significant other, family member, whatever it is. And they say, hey, I was able to get an appointment, but so and so wasn't, can I add them to a list? Um, so I was able to during the pods create a standby list that way. Um, I also had a standby list from the Washoe County Health District where I could call individuals um, at the end of our pods and get, get those individuals down there. So, um, no, no doses were ever wasted. We were making sure that we were contacting people and, and getting people down to the clinic so that way we could accommodate those extra doses. Go to the next slide. So where are we going from here? Again, um, we have second dose pod scheduled through mid-April. I have, this week I have one on Tuesday, I have one on Wednesday, and I have another one on Friday. Um, again, I want to try to get two to three first dose pods on the week of April nineteenth. Um, I have a Nugget pod for tomorrow, and then I have another larger Nugget pod following week, which is when we'll vaccinate a large majority of their employees. Um, there is talk of doing a community outreach pod where we're targeting a specific, um, area code, like the eight nine four three one, um, area, um, so that's kind of in the works. I do currently have some Johnson and Johnson on hand, and I'm trying to get a little bit more so we can make a bigger dent if we decide to do that. Um, and then us and then Reno Fire and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District have been talking about possibly doing a large-scale regional pod sometime in the middle of May. Um, I know the Washoe County Health District will be down that week in the middle of May, um, because they are being moved from the Health District or the Livestock Event Center somewhere else. So there is a possibility of us doing a large-scale regional pod with the other fire agencies. Um, and then obviously, a lot of questions were, uh, asked about April fifth, and are we gonna be opening to the general population for those eighteen and older, sixteen and older? And yes, since the, uh, fifth, we have had a first dose pod and we are now open to anybody over the age of eighteen. Um, as mentioned earlier, we are doing just the Moderna vaccine. Um, so with that, we have to do eighteen and older, we can't go under the eighteen. So yes, we are open to anyone over the age of eighteen. That's kind of where we're at, and moving forward and kind of what we're looking to do. So, um, I think that was it. Is there another slide or is it just the? Hey, you guys have any questions now, myself or Chief McEvers will answer any questions that you guys might have, but thank you for having us.
Thank you. Then do you have questions from the council? Can we stop the screen sharing now? There we go. Ms. Bybee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, not a question, just, uh, as much as a comment on, uh, just how, um, how proud I am that, uh, our Sparks Fire Department has played such an active role in this very, um, crucial way for us to move forward by getting as many people vaccinated as we can. And the work you're doing is awesome. I appreciate the fact that you've, um, we're all learning as we go every step of it from, you know, standby lists to making sure that vaccines don't go wasted. I think other communities, you don't see that. And I think this community as a whole, they've done a really good job of doing that and getting the word out to people where to go, you know, where to get vaccinated. And I just, um, thank you for the work you're doing for the community outreach, uh, not just for city employees and first responders, but the Nugget, uh, eight nine four three one, all of the outreach. Critically important, uh, that as many people who, who want to be vaccinated, again, it is a choice that people can make. But thank you for helping facilitate that. You guys are just, you're rocking them, and I, I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'm gonna say, Captain Gay, thank you very much for letting me cut the line off Friday. My, uh, my appointment while I had a board meeting going on, so you guys let me get in a little bit early that day. I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to my second dose here in, in, uh, just about a month. Great job.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to, uh, consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item, if not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve consent items eight point one through eight point four.
Okay, looking for a second. Mr. Abbott, second. Any further discussion? See none. All those of favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, most carries unanimously. All right, nine point one, consideration and discussion, uh, and possible approval of a funding allocation of twenty-five thousand for F Y twenty-one as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the Sparks Art Walk Marketing Materials. Tony Pele, the man, the myth, the legend, is here to speak to us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Tony Pele, Acting Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. As you mentioned, I have for your consideration and possible approval, a funding allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-one as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the Sparks Art Walk Marketing Materials. The twenty-five thousand dollars will cover, cover graphic design, website, maps, and ad, advertising templates. The Sparks Art, Art Walk is a curated collection of regularly rotating art, including sculptures and a mural installed in downtown Sparks. The Sparks Art Walk is designed to enhance the local environment and increase the number of downtown visitors outside of special events. New artwork will be rotated into the collection every two years. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Don't see any. You did an excellent job there. Okay. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve. Ms. Vanderwell.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the funding allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars for F Y twenty-one as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for the Sparks Art Walk Mater, Marketing Materials.
Okay. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Uh, I would be happy to second that and just a brief comment. Um, Tony, thank you for the work that you do. And I think as we're looking to get people back into downtown, coming out of this pandemic, um, having the art and the artwork walk there, it's just one more draw to, uh, have people have another reason to come back into Victorian Square. And it's an important piece of it is a vision for Victorian Square District and for the art that is a part of that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had a meeting, a lunch meeting in, uh, downtown Sparks and pointed, uh, my two lunch guests over to the, the theater where that piece of art is displayed. And they said it really captures Sparks for me. And I got a text later saying, yes, it's very. Go ahead, Mr. Darren.
I just wanted to say, I was down there on another occasion and I watched probably three or four families walk up just to get a picture there. And that is, people wonder why, why do we put investment into these things? It creates a community and it creates, uh, you know, even, even visitors and people want to come down. So I think it was pretty awesome.
Yep, good stuff. All right, anyone else? You got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? See none. All those of favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, most carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Tony. Uh, nine point two, consideration discussion of possible approval of reimbursement to the City of Reno for the City of Sparks share, the construction contract with Far Construction Corporation, D B A Resource Development Company for the top deck recoding and repair project, uh, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of one million eight hundred seventeen thousand six hundred dollars with the City of Sparks share being five hundred seventy thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. Mr. Drinkwater.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Tribune Plant Manager. I'm here before you this afternoon at the request to approve a reimbursement agreement to the City of Reno for the, uh, capital improvement project that the mayor just read, the top deck coating rehabilitation. Uh, this particular project, uh, intends to, uh, remove and replace the, uh, wear surface in and around the clarifiers and the aeration basins here at the plant, approximately fifty thousand square feet of surface. It serves, uh, uh, dual purposes. It serves to protect the underlying structural concrete as well as serve as a, a non-stick, uh, walking surface for the operators and the other staff. This is anticipated work. It is in the approved F Y twenty-one Tomworth C I P. As is customary, the City of Reno, uh, put it out for a competitive bid. Far Construction D B A Resource Development was the low bidder. Uh, there is adequate funding in the, uh, the budget for this project. And so I'm looking for the approval to reimburse Reno, um, and then we can get to work. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council. See none, uh, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Move to approve the reimbursement to the City of Reno, uh, for the City of Sparks' share of a construction contract with Far Construction Corp. D B A Resource Development Company for the top deck recoding and repair project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of one million eight hundred seventeen thousand six hundred dollars with the City of Sparks share being five hundred seventy thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents.
Twelve cents. Don't forget the twelve cents. I know it's an old joke, but I still get cracked up out of Mr. Drinkwater. I got a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? See none. All those of favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, most carries unanimously. Thank you. Consideration discussion of possible, nine point three, consideration discussion and possible approval to purchase one aerial fire truck from Grand Fire Apparatus Rosenbauer utilizing a joiner bid from H G A C, a purchasing consortium contract number F S twelve dash nineteen in the amount of one million two hundred twenty thousand dollars, two hundred twenty, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. A lot of commas there. Kevin, you're up. Well, you're kind of fading in.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Lawson, members of council, uh, Kevin Jacobus. Uh, we'll, we'll try. Can you guys hear me okay?
A little better now.
Is a. We'll give it a shot. If not, I'll, I'll have to kick it over to Chief Kindness. Uh, but good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of council, Kevin Jacobus Battalion Chief and your fire department. Uh, what I have for you is Equipment Services is requesting to spend one million two hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars to replace our current aerial apparatus for the fire, for the fire department. Real brief background on it. Uh, this is a continuation of our apparatus replacement plan that we set in place to replace our fleet without incurring any debt and taking advantage of what discounts we could. Uh, so what this proposal does is it, it replaces our first-line apparatus as a two thousand six. This will move that to a reserve apparatus and our nineteen ninety-five reserve will, it's met its end of life. Uh, so that thing will be replaced. It, it no longer meets current, uh, performance or N F P A safety standards. Uh, we do have one point one million, uh, budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one, and we have planned four hundred thousand for the next fiscal cycle. Uh, what we're looking at is a ninety percent prepay from the fiscal year twenty-one funds. Um, that ninety percent prepay gives us a, a discount. So we'll save, uh, thirty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-four by doing a, a ninety percent prepay. Uh, the balance of that, uh, a balance of the one point two, less the ten percent will be paid out of the next fiscal year budget. So really what we're looking at in the next fiscal year is about eighty-four thousand, uh, two hundred fifty-five dollars. Um, the delivery of this truck will be in fiscal year twenty-two. So once we order it, it'll take about, uh, a year and two months, uh, before we do receive it. I have a couple of pictures, uh, so I'll share my screen with you guys. Uh, just so you can kind of see, uh, what you'll see on the streets in our community. So this white truck, that's the retiring truck we have, the nineteen ninety-five Spartan. Our first out truck that we have right now is this, uh, two thousand six American La France.
Well, we lost Kevin.
Hey, Lisa, how about if we bring Chief Kindness into the room?
He is already on.
Okay.
Go ahead, chief. We, we lost Kevin there at the end. How weird was La France?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Uh, for the record, Jim Kindness, Division Chief of Operations. Uh, I'll share my screen with you, which was where Kevin was at. Uh, going back to where he left off, this is our nineteen ninety-five, uh, truck. This thing's going out of service. Actually, we've already taken it out of service. Uh, it's at twenty-five years and, uh, not the safest truck to operate anymore. We have. Stand by, I'm gonna try to move this over. Our next slide is our current truck. That's first out right now. You've, you'll see this driving around the city right now.
Our next slide is our current truck. That's first out right now. You've, you'll see this driving around the city right now. This truck's going to be put in reserve status as soon as we receive the next truck. This is a two thousand and six. And our next picture is what we're ordering through Rosenbauer. And like Kevin said, we'll receive this about a year and two months after we order it. And I'm available for any questions anybody has.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Grant?
Yeah, um, Chief, I, I'm just wondering if, if you could tell us a little bit about the process that you guys go through on finding the piece of equipment, specing it out. Obviously, one point two million is, is a fair amount of money. So I was just wondering about the process that you guys go through to, to find the best unit for the city.
Oh, yes. So we've been, we went with Rosenbauer's for the last, I think it's five to eight years. We try to keep our, our apparatus custom so that we're using the same manufacturer to provide us with a custom, custom engine, custom truck. It's a lot easier for our garage if they're dealing with one manufacturer than trying to deal with multiple. We just received last year a Quint which has a seventy-five foot or seventy-eight foot ladder on it. So a lot of the overrides and, and systems that are on that truck are going to be the same with this new truck. So it's for training available or training and for our guys to know the systems, it's much easier if we're going with one manufacturer. So that's a part of the reason why we're going with Rosenbauer for this truck.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Dair.
How long does something like this last?
This, this new truck that we're going to get will, will be around for the next twenty-five years. So if you look at NFPA standards, once a vehicle hits twenty-five years, they say it's not safe to operate. And even though we do have other apparatus that are over that, once you have a truck like this, which puts you up a hundred feet in the air, you definitely want to look to a new apparatus at that point.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'll be retired by then. That's cool.
Me too.
Bye.
Yeah, just one more question on, I know you said it'd be a year and two months before we received it. And I know that we, or I guess my question is, we're looking to order it ASAP because there is going to be a pricing increase coming. So if this is approved today, how quickly will you be ordering? And, and that would look at fourteen months following that, we'd have the truck in our possession?
Yeah, if this is approved today, we'll, we'll work with the manufacturer next week. And we've already got the bid, the spec. We will do some more work on the spec with some small changes. And we'll get it, and then this next month, we will get it ordered.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Dair.
Sure. I move to approve a purchase of one aerial fire truck from Graham Fire Apparatus Rosenbauer utilizing a jointer bid from HGAC in the amount of one million two hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and zero cents.
I'll make a second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right. A fire truck moving. This will be good for us. All right, nine point four, consideration discussion of possible direction to the city manager to initiate changes to section twenty dash oh four or dot oh four dot zero zero five intensity standards and twenty dot zero three dot zero four zero temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend permitted hours of construction. Mr. Rundle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Spark City Council. The item in front of you today, I'm Jim Rundle, Planning Manager. And the item in front of you today is regarding potential direction to the city manager to, as you outlined, Mr. Mayor, potential amendments to construction hours and temporary use permits. This item was most recently brought forward to you at the February twenty-second meeting, at which time the council voted unanimously to direct the city manager to conduct outreach to construction industry representatives and then report back to the city council with our findings. Councilman Anderson, I think you originally brought this to the council's attention. And then again, we voted, the council voted on that back in February. Well, as a result, staff met with representatives of the Association of General Contractors, which I'll refer to as AGC, the Builders Association of Northern Nevada, which I'll refer to as BAN, and associated builders and contractors known as ABC. Today, you can consider the input by these industry representatives and direct the city manager to proceed with drafting amendments related to modifying construction hour limitations. Currently, the Sparks Municipal, Sparks Municipal Code limits construction hours to seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM on Saturday, and no construction is permitted on Sundays. These construction hours have remained consistent and enforced in Sparks for approximately twenty years. Prior to codification in the municipal code, construction hours were regulated through individual land use entitlements, special use permits, and, and most importantly, planned development handbooks. And I did identify in the meetings to, with the development representatives that any changes that the council may direct would not apply to the handbooks in, in the city of Sparks. Adoption of the construction hours back in twenty fifteen was accompanied by some flexibility. The municipal code allows the city manager to permit exemptions to the codified construction hours on a case-by-case basis through the temporary use permit. Staff uses this provision to permit work outside of adopted hours of construction to promote public safety. Now, this could be work in the public right-of-way at night or it could, or it could be for a large concrete pour that needs to begin prior to seven AM because of anticipated heat, humidity, wind, or otherwise, or other items that may preclude such a pour during regular construction hours. During the February council meeting, the direction to the city manager was to initiate conversations with industry representatives, identify possible desires of the industry, and, and lastly, to minimize staff time spent on, on the assignment. Accordingly, staff conducted two outreach meetings. The first meeting was attended by Alexis Motor Rex, who represented the AGC, and Mac Bybee, who represented ABC. A second meeting was, was held, and that was attended again by Alexis and, and Dan Morgan of the Builders Association. The second meeting was held because Dan was unable to make the first meeting do a last, due to a last minute scheduling conflict. So again, I, I scheduled a second meeting to accommodate a Mr. Morgan to be able to make that meeting. In those meetings, there was a very robust conversation and the industry represented their, or conveyed their interest to me. And based on those two meetings, I deduced there were two themes that the development community desired. One was to extend the construction hours in the summer months, say from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And second, provide direction to the city manager on staff issuing longer temporary use permits, potentially up to thirty days. Now, more specifically, the industry was requesting hours of five AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, during those summer months. They did not ask for additional hours on Saturday from nine AM to five PM, and they did not request additional hours on Sunday. A principal reason that the industry, industry requested these additional construction hours were the well-being of their employees. They believed an earlier start time such as five AM, would allow a worker to complete a shift earlier in the hour, in the, earlier in the afternoon and be able to get out of what routinely becomes ninety-plus degree heat in those summer months. And the second request again was to modify temporary use permit regulations and primarily the industry's desire to accommodate concrete pours, which are necessary for a large percentage of our projects in Sparks, in Sparks. Again, excessive winds, high heat, low humidity can all affect when that concrete needs to be poured. And typically, they need to be poured prior to five AM. Additionally, the industry representatives encouraged the council to consider directing staff to permit periods for up to thirty days for a temporary use permit. Generally, staff has utilized the Sparks Municipal Code to permit hours outside of the typical construction hours to, to enhance public safety. Well, we utilize excessive heat as one of those reasons. And oftentimes, we use the seven-day forecast to identify if we believe it is going to be excessive. Temperatures of greater than ninety degrees have been used by staff to, to determine those are excessive. Anything outside of seven days, we believe gets to be too inconsistent for, for how we apply that standard. I think we all know, we've been here in June and one week it's ninety-five degrees and the next week it can be snowing. So staff has used that seven-day forecast to, to permit working outside the, the municipal codes identified construction hours. As discussed, the city council voted to direct the city manager to, to meet with industry representatives and identify the desires of the development community while minimizing staff time. Staff believes we've accomplished the direction of the city council by conducting the two outreach meetings, by identifying the desires of the development community to allow for earlier start times and potentially more direction on longer periods for temporary use permits. And then third, to reduce the amount of staff time invested in the process. And I believe staff utilized about ninety minutes between the two, cumulatively between the two meetings. This item provides the city council the opportunity to direct the city manager on potential amendments to construction hour regulations in the municipal code. And additionally, amendments to the temporary use permit that is identified in the Sparks Municipal Code. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Questions from the council? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, Jim, I just, well, first off, our city manager, Mr. Krutz, thank you for having staff work on this. We, we appreciate you taking a look at it. Jim, appreciate you guys working with industry, talking to them and making sure that, that we're hearing what, what it is that they're looking for. One thing I did want to make sure though, I heard from industry that they were actually not looking for just the winter month, months to have the hours extended. They were actually looking for it year-round. But what they were using, as I understand it, as an example, primarily was the heat of the summertime. So that, that is one of the things I just wanted to clarify that they're looking, looking for it to be in a year-round extension of hours. Other than that, I just want to say thank you. I, I do like the idea also of the thirty-day temporary use permit instead of every seven days them having to apply and, and wait for that request to, to come back. So that's one that I would say that I, I encourage us to consider that.
You want, Mr. Vanderwell?
Yes, I, thank you. I would like to echo what Councilman Anderson has said. And then also, if I could please get a clarification, Mr. Rundle. It's my understanding that we discussed this at our January twenty-fifth city council meeting on, on, during nine point three. I just want to make sure that we've got it on the right as we're discussing it.
I thought it was February twenty-second, but I could, I could look that up if, if I have the date wrong, but I, I would need just a minute to, to confirm that.
Well, I just want to make sure, Mr. Rundle, I just want to make sure that it doesn't cause issues with what we're discussing. That's all.
I don't think the date of the direction causes any issues that, but I can, I can circle back with the council and, or with you and confirm that date. But it would not affect anything that would be discussed today.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Dair followed by Ms. Bybee.
Yeah, I believe this item just gives the ability for you guys to go do some more explore. We're not making a final decision today. What, what's the timing on how we think this would unfold?
Council or council member Dair, that's correct. This item does not, would not change the municipal code. It would not change the construction hours. It would not change the temporary use permit parameters. This would simply provides the council the opportunity to direct the city manager to go and explore amendments to the municipal code. And we would, if that direction is provided to the city manager, I would then undertake, based on what the motion is, I would then report back to the city manager on a, a timeline of, of what those amendments would, would include. And again, after that's identified, we would go to assuming direction, we would ultimately go to Sparks Planning Commission and present the item to them and ask them for a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you for the clarification of process. I, I definitely think there's wisdom in us visiting it, seeing what's there and seeing what's be there. I, I think the thirty day does make sense to me every week a bit. So, thank you.
Ms. Bybee, go ahead.
Um, part of my question was just answered. I just wanted to clarify that we were directing the direction today would be for the city manager to direct staff to actually look at what those times and amendments and suggestions that we would come up with of the actual amendments themselves. And then I do understand that process of planning commission then back to us. I do understand the, the desires of the building, you know, builders working with as much work as we have and, and trying to get efficiencies, but also trying to, to build as fast as we can, meet the demands that we have, housing especially. And, and then weather, dealing with weather. And sometimes too, when you can, maybe by looking at a reasonable extension to those hours, can get a project done more quickly, can be less disruptive to neighboring homes or neighborhoods near where the construction is occurring as well as our roads. It, it all makes sense of why that, it makes fiscal sense to, for the developers, but also for the community itself. I think looking at those changes and especially because we've done so long. And at this time, we know that construction is vibrant and booming. And so if we can help facilitate that, I think that's a wise thing to do. And I do look forward to those amendments crafting out and, and seeing what those are and that we have an opportunity to actually look at the specific amendments and whether we support those or not, and to hear from the public as well as from industry, on people's response. So thank you and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Anyone else? Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I'll just chime in that I, I support the, having not, not come back every seven days. I think that's going to help our staff. Just not have to, you know, your guys' time's already valuable as it is. And there was ninety minutes there, but there's ninety minutes of stuff you could have, there's other things, other things to do. So we can, that save your time. I think that'll make us be beneficial for the entire community as well as, I think it's important for us to, you know, we look at these hours and just because it's been like this for a while doesn't mean it always has to be this way. And that's not just for this, for many other things too. So.
Okay. And I got a call from a contractor today that they're more interested in the temporary use extension to the thirty days. I understand the reasoning behind the seven day. But I think for especially contractors and getting labor and sometimes materials delivered, having a little flexibility for them works out. So just wanted to convey that to you. And Mr. Krutz, you had a question?
I, I have some information to clear up the, the date confusion that we, that we find ourselves in. This, this issue was first agendized at the January twenty-fifth city council meeting, but we are here today following up on the direction that you gave to us on February twenty-second.
Okay. All right. You have enough direction, Mr. Krutz? I think the move.
Well, actually, I do have a, I do have a question there because I, in, in terms of, of the specific steps you, you want us to take, are you asking us to draw up a, a series of code amendments, one that would change the start time to five AM? And two, that would allow for a temporary use permit of up to thirty days? Are you asking for both of those? And then inside of that, are you also asking for us to go back out to the community and get more feedback? Or do you just want us to write up the changes and bring it to you? The more, the more specificity you can offer us, the better.
Mr. Anderson, you started this mess, so let's see if you can clarify.
Thank you. So I do want to include both of them together. I, I think it'd be crazy to have just part of that in there. So both. I I think it'd be crazy to have just part of that in there. So both both parts of it as far as extending the hours and and the temporary, the temporary use permit up to thirty days. I know that you guys have already begun the process on section twenty. So with that being said, if if we were to put everything and move all of this forward as one one project in the section twenty, how much more time are we looking at for this? If if we were to vote for this today to move forward versus as as a whole for the section? Jim, is that something you could speak to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Crutes. Councilmember Anderson, we have not begun in amendments to Title Twenty. That has not been directed by the city council at this point. That is an item we are hoping to bring back. That was requested by Councilmember Dare of the city manager to bring back to the city council for possible direction on amendments to the Title Twenty in its entirety. I'll call it, you know, specific specific amendments, but other amendments that we see fit. We hope to bring that back to the council as staff in the in the May meeting. But we have not provided the council that opportunity yet because of the work we're doing on this item and then also with the rock crushing item that that council directed. So this provides the opportunity to direct those amendments for construction hours. And as manager Crutes identified, the more specificity that the council can provide, the better for staff to be able to process it expeditiously.
Okay, thank you. So with with that being said, I I would like to go ahead and move forward with this. And yes, so make, I I know that, Jim, you did some social media information and and trying to get word out about, you know, the rock crushing, things like that. I just want to make sure we're engaging the public too. Yes, it's great. We want to represent the industry, but we also want to hear from the homeowners, the constituents around our community. So that's something that I would really like to see that we're making sure that we move forward with that portion of it as well. But yeah, is that enough, Neil, or you need more specific direction? Well, it I we we could we could work with that. But but let me let me ask a a leading, not necessarily a leading question, but a clarifying question. In in terms of of the outreach, would you be looking for something similar to what we did for rock crushing? Where we we filmed a video, we put it up on our website, we gave people a couple of weeks to to comment on it and then bring you back what we hear? Is that is that what you're looking for? For me, that would be sufficient and I'd be happy to hear from my my fellow members here if they have any other thoughts on it.
Anyone else? Ms. Byby?
Um, again, we're looking at this just keeps adding more time onto things, more time and more staff work. I think the opportunity to for public comment, you know, for for putting the information out to the public, but the public comment periods, both at the planning commission and the city council, is an opportunity for us to hear from our residents, whether we would post any of this on social media, just as an FYI and let people know that, you know, that's coming before the planning commission, then it's coming for the council to hear those voices of our residents as well would be sufficient for me instead of doing something separate like the the rock crushing, which which I appreciated. I thought that was great. But again, it's more time and more work. So for me, you know, directing these changes and then asking for public input during the process would suffice for me.
Anyone else? Mr. Dare?
I I'm going to agree with Councilwoman Byby. I I think we we've done some outreach. I believe that we have a definite, we're open to public conversation every time we meet. And when this comes back to us, it will be there. I think as we just get this out there and move forward, this is one of those. I I think we can make this as a bigger deal than it is. I think this is important and we are being wise with our staff and with what we're doing. And so I think it'd be good to move forward.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, and then I think it's important to note too that this only applies to section twenty. No handbooks are affected by this. So that that that's going to be a confusing part for the public, which I happen to agree with Councilwoman Byby and Councilman Dare that we can bet that out at planning commission and then when it comes back to city council, just so that everyone's aware. It's not a wholesale. And I don't know what I can't remember the exact percentage, but we're somewhere around seventy percent of the city is handbook. And the other thirty percent is not.
I don't know the percentage, Mr. Mayor, but we have like forty-four handbooks in the city of Sparks.
It's a good, good bit of them. Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we we beat this one up enough for you, Neil. Do you have some good direction?
I I have direction. I would ask for a vote.
I'm going to get, okay, make sure that you're you're good first. All right, Mr. Anderson?
All right, I'll make a motion. I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes to section two zero point zero four point zero zero five intensity standards and two zero point zero three point zero four zero temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend permitted hours of construction.
Do you want to address the thirty days?
Well, if if I need to add into that, then yeah, I would I would like to make sure that we're addressing the the thirty day temporary use permit. The extending it to thirty days as well as the fact that as as we talked about a little bit earlier, that it would actually include all of the months of the year, not just the summer during the the extended hours.
Okay. We got a second by Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, although the favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously. Okay. You got your motion. Okay, moving on. Nine point five, consideration discussion of possible approval of a cooperative local public agency agreement, AC five seven four eight with Nevada Department of Transportation, otherwise known as NDOT, for grant funding for the purchase of multi-use sidewalk tractors with potential costs of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-two with NDOT reimbursement not to exceed one hundred ninety thousand. And this is Ms. Sosa.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. As introduced, I'm here to present a cooperative LPA, Local Public Agency Agreement, between the city of Sparks and the Nevada Department of Transportation for grant funding to purchase two multi-use sidewalk tractors. The city of Sparks currently owns and maintains our sidewalks and our bike facilities, some of which are quite unique, such as our existing cycle track that's on Victorian, as well as another proposed cycle track for the Audi Boulevard corridor. Now, these type of facilities are areas that our maintenance teams struggle with due to their narrow widths and those unique layouts. Through continued coordination with the Regional Transportation Commission, as well as with NDOT, the city was notified that two hundred thousand dollars of grant funding had been programmed to help us purchase equipment to help our public works team with the maintenance of our sidewalks and our bike facilities. This grant will be administered by NDOT and it's done through the STBG, the Surface Transportation Block Grant, which is a federal program. To initiate the purchase process, the city must first need to approve the agreement that I'm presenting to you today. So I'm hoping you are wondering what a multi-use sidewalk tractor is. So these pictures are an example of what that multi-use sidewalk tractor could look like. They come with a lot of possibilities as far as front attachments and rear attachments that would be able to help our public works maintenance teams with things such as sweeping, plowing, brining, and just to name a few that there's quite a few possibilities with all the attachments. As mentioned, the grant funding is currently two hundred thousand dollars. And through the terms of this agreement, up to ninety-five percent of the purchase price, which under this agreement amounts to a maximum of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, would be eligible to be reimbursed from NDOT to the city. The city would be responsible for providing that additional five percent match and anything above the grant amount of two hundred thousand. The existing estimate for two of these multi-use sidewalk tractors is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So with that ninety-five five split and the overage, it would put the estimated cost to the city right now at sixty thousand dollars. The agreement does require the city to initially fund a hundred percent of the purchase cost and NDOT will provide reimbursement with the sum total of the appropriate documents. Funding for the city's portion of the project is identified in FY twenty-two. Approving the attached agreement does not at this time obligate the city to fund the purchase. It simply allows staff to start the process for the purchase and the agreement may be terminated by mutual consent of both parties without cost. So approving this agreement is that first step to moving us forward to purchasing. City staff will be responsible for a competitive solicited bid for this equipment. NDOT will provide overview of bidding, awarding and purchase. And NDOT will approve our completed bid package before we're allowed to advertise. Should you approve this agreement and we move forward, we would look at advertising the bid package in the summer of twenty twenty-one and moving forward with procuring the equipment after that. The agreement is attached to the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Pretty cool little machine, Mr. Dare.
Yes, I I think it's great that we're getting this and then really appreciate it for NDOT stepping in. I know when we first talked about these cycle tracks, they were going to require new kind of maintenance. And so I think times if our public might wonder, you know, when we spend money on things, we're not just trying to find cool little tractors, actually. This actually fits a need that was that with rebuilding these cycle tracks, make it to wherever there's snow or anything, we're able to use them all over the place, but also utilize them even on the river if necessary and stuff. So I think it's pretty great and thank you. And so we're going to have two of them. Is that right? Is that what in?
Yes, current we're we're looking to purchase two with this grant funding.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Anybody? Bueller?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Ms. Vanderwell, go right ahead.
I move to approve the Cooperative Local Public Agency Agreement, AC dash five seven four eight with the Nevada Department of Transportation for a grant for the purchase of the multi-use sidewalk tractors with a potential cost of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-two with an NDOT reimbursement not to exceed a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, looking for
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second from Byby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously. Okay. All right, nine point six, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract, AC five seven four six with Sierra Nevada Construction for the twenty twenty-one preventative maintenance patch project bid number twenty twenty-one dash zero one five, PWP number WA dash twenty twenty-one dash one eighty-nine in the amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand and seven dollars and no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This item is a construction contract for our FY twenty-one preventative maintenance patch program project. This project will permanently patch city-owned streets. Some of the patching are overall patching areas where we're seeing a lot of cracking. These are also usually scheduled on our next preventative maintenance project, our slurry project. And some are areas that are experienced more larger singular traverse cracks. Let me share my screen. The map before you, you'll see Sparks Boulevard tier left and you'll see Vista towards the middle. The areas in red are the neighborhoods where there's patching included in this construction project. This project advertised on March third. We received two qualifying bidders on March eighteenth with Sierra Nevada Construction being the low bid at three hundred and sixty-four thousand and seven dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to approve the construction contract, AC five seven four six with Sierra Nevada Construction for twenty twenty-one preventive maintenance patch project bid number two zero two one dash zero one five, PWP WA dash two zero two one dash one eight nine in the amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand seven dollars and no sense.
I'm looking for a second.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously. All right, nine point seven, consideration discussion of possible approval of a change order number one to AC five seven four six, the twenty twenty-one preventative maintenance patch project bid number twenty dash twenty-one dash zero one five, PWP WA dash twenty twenty-one dash one eighty-nine with Sierra Nevada Construction to add the additional streets for preventative maintenance patching in the amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars twenty-five cents for the total contract amount of four hundred forty-six thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This item is a change order to the item that you just heard, the project you just heard, a change order to our FY twenty-one preventative maintenance patch per project. Because of the very favorable unit prices that we receive, we're seeking this change order to add additional streets in. I'm hoping this map looks familiar. The one that you just saw had the red on it and what we're asking to change order in is the blue. Again, that was because of the very favorable pricing we got as well as it will allow us to complete this entire neighborhood without having to look to come back in a different year for the same type of work. Adding this change order will add over fifty-two hundred linear feet of that large crack patching that we are discussing. The change order cost is again eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for that overall contract price of four hundred forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. This additional work is scheduled is projected to add two additional days to the overall schedule. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
Just come in.
Byby?
Um, yeah, Amber, I just I just want to comment on the fact that I I know how 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 really good you and your staff are at at taking advantage when we get some really good pricing. So the fiscal responsibility that you take very seriously that gets more work done at a better price is is very much appreciated. And the expansion of those additional streets, it just makes sense once we, you know, have the contract and we can do more for just a little bit more of that. That's that's a bonus for everyone. So I and I am prepared to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I move to approve change order number one to AC five seven four six the twenty twenty-one preventive maintenance maintenance patch project bid number twenty twenty-one dash oh one five, PWP WA dash two oh two one dash one eight nine with Sierra Nevada Construction to add additional streets for preventative maintenance patching in the amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for a total contract amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Hey, looking for a second? Second by Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously. Thank you. This Amber showed today, right?
Only one more.
Okay. Consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract, AC five seven four seven with Sierra Nevada Construction for the twenty twenty-one street preventative maintenance project bid number, we've said it several times with the one sixty on the end in the amount of three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-eight thousand and seven dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager, one more time. This is a construction contract for our FY twenty-one preventative maintenance project, also known as our slurry project, our annual slurry project. This is our yearly program that provides that preventative maintenance wearing course, our rapid setting slurry seals on our candidate payments that are identified through our transportation plan. This map, while a little zoomed out because we are all over our city, shows the neighborhoods there in red that we will be including in this year's preventative maintenance program. Uh, that we will be including in this year's preventative maintenance program. With this project, we will be treating over one point nine million feet of roadway with a rapid setting slurry seal. The project advertised February seventeenth, bids were open on March third. The city of Sparks received three bids for this project, although one bid was later deemed non-responsive. And Sierra Nevada Construction submitted the low bid in the amount of three hundred and seventy eight thousand and seven dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council. If not, I'm looking for a motion, Mister Dare.
I'll make the motion, but I do want to say happy birthday, Amber.
Thank you.
I move to approve a construction contract AC five seven four seven with Sierra Nevada Construction for the twenty twenty one street. Preventative maintenance project bid number twenty slash twenty one, zero one one. P W P W A twenty twenty one dash one six oh, an amount of three hundred seventy eight thousand and seven dollars with zero cents.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll make a second.
Second by Mister Anderson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, most carries unanimously, thank you, Amber.
Thank you all.
All right, uh, nine point nine, consideration discussion of possible approval of a con- construction contract. AC five seven five zero with West Coast Paving Inc. For the Jack Revilio Memorial Park Construction Project bid number. Twenty twenty one dash zero one three. P W P number W A twenty twenty one dash one sixty eight. In the amount of five hundred forty two thousand five hundred and three dollars, which includes the base bid plus alternate B. Brian K.
Thank you.
Mouthful.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager. I am here today to present the Jack Revilio Memorial Park Construction Project. Um, let me bring up the map to show the location. So this particular project is located out in North Sparks. Um, just before, just as Vista Boulevard curves around to Campello Drive. Uh, this area in blue is the location just adjacent to Truth Drive. As you will recall, back on March twenty second, I brought forth to you, um, basically the approval of. Playground equipment, and that was for the purchase of that playground equipment. This is the two to five-year-old playground equipment that you approved, along with the five to twelve-year-old playground equipment. This particular project, uh, will include the installation of this, of this particular, um, equipment. Along with, um, new concrete pathways, some grass open space benches. And then we also included two alternates, um, alternate A. This would change the base bid, which included engineered safety wood fiber to a two-foot by two-foot rubber tile system. The, the alternate A came in at a hundred and sixty nine thousand seventy two dollars, which was not in the available budget. So we are not recommending, um, accepting alternate A. But alternate B, which was for a twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot shade shelter, came in at forty nine thousand five hundred dollars, which. Is, is in the available budget. So with that, staff does recommend council approved Jack Revilio Memorial Park Construction Project. In the amount of five hundred and forty two thousand five hundred and three dollars to West Coast Paving Incorporated. This does include both the base bid of four hundred ninety three thousand three dollars and alternate B. Which is for the shade shelter in the amount of forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions from the council. This by.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you, Brian, and I just wanted to clarify the difference of the, uh, obviously besides the price. Uh, the alternate A was the ti- the, the surface that was the rubber snapped together. Very expensive, uh, uh, option underneath playground equipment. But with option B, we'd be able to put a shade structure up and then the surface would be the bark, the synthetic bark. Is that? What that option includes?
Yeah, it would include the synthetic bark and that's what we typically put around the playground structures around town. Once in a while, we, we typically do include this alternate to see if we can, uh, get a better price or a price that would be within the budget. But with the items that I, I explained, that does cover everything that was within the original plan. Uh, whenever the project was, was anticipated a few years back.
Okay, uh, thank you, and I, I appreciate that, and I really think, uh, the, the shade structure is an important addition. Uh, summertime and even winter and during weather, you know, having a shade structure up there, I think is critically important. And, um, I, I support his motion and my residents in my ward. Uh, are going to be thrilled that they finally have a park that they've been waiting for, for quite some time, that they can take kids or grandkids to. So I know, um, I know the residents out, out there in that area are, are really, I'm excited about this park finally opening. And I am ready to make a motion when you are ready, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I move to approve the construction contract AC five seven five zero. With West Coast Paving Inc. for the Jack Revilio Memorial Park Construction Project. Bid number twenty twenty one dash oh one three P W P W A twenty twenty one dash one six eight. In the amount of five hundred and forty two thousand five hundred and three dollars and zero cents. Which includes the base bid plus alternate B.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Second from there, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, most carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, nine point one zero, consideration discussion of possible approval. Of a construction contract AC five seven four nine with Anchor Concrete. For the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvements, section four and the project bid number. In the amount of four hundred forty one thousand six hundred and fifty six dollars, Mister Case.
Again, uh, for the record, Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager. I am going to bring up the overall map to give you a location of where this project's located at. This is for the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project, section four. Uh, this is a continuation of infrastructure improvement projects that we have completed. All along Victorian Avenue over the last three years. Um, this particular section is located just to the east of Fifteenth Street and just to the west of Victorian Plaza Circle. And that is on the north side of Victorian Avenue. This does include upgrading the sidewalks, um, upgrading the irrigation. Installing new planter boxes, installing five new art pedestals. Removing an existing unused bus, bus station and also installing a new six or, I'm sorry, seven stall parking lot. There were five bids that were received, the lowest responsive bidder was Anchor Concrete in the amount of four hundred and forty one thousand six hundred and fifty six dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, question from the council. Can't see anybody, Brian.
Stop my share, okay, there we go.
Ah, there they are. Any question from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mister Abbott.
Um, I'm going to approve the construction contract, uh, EC dash five seven four nine with Anchor Concrete. The Victoria Square Interception Improvement, Section Four Project in the amount of four hundred forty one thousand six hundred and fifty six dollars and zero cents.
Good, uh, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Given by Anderson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both, most carries unanimously. All right, nine point one one, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC five seven five one. With West Coast Paving Inc. for the Golden Eagle Regional Park Little League Parking Lot Expansion Project. In the amount of five hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, ninety seven and three dollars, Mister Case.
Yes, so. Again, this particular project is for the, uh, Golden Eagle Little League Regional Park. Uh, parking lot expansion project, the, this particular parking lot will, uh, be constructed just on the north side of Victoria. I'm not Victorian, on the north side of Golden Eagle Regional Park, adjacent to the Little League fields, which are located right here. Um, this particular project does include the eighty-three additional parking spaces, new lighting, an emergency turnaround. A walking bridge, a split rail fence that will go around the parking lot, a detention basin and new landscaping. We do have three, three different funding sources, one is from an, uh, impact fee service area one, which was for three hundred thousand dollars. That was previously approved by council. Um, Park, Parks and Recreation Fund, Fund fourteen oh two includes roughly ninety thousand dollars, which was also previously approved. Along with a interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County for three hundred thousand dollars. Then, uh, we will be invoicing the, the project directly to Washoe County. Uh, there were four bids received with the lowest responsive bid being West Coast Paving Incorporated in the amount of five hundred ninety seven thousand and three dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, question from the council. This by.
Um, I will have to comment that on Saturday, I happened to be driving out to go through Golden Eagle. My brother just recently moved here and I wanted to show him what an awesome facility. We had lunch at Red Hawk and drove out to Garp and I was so excited to see the place just packed. And there were cars everywhere, those fields, you know, you had games going. Uh, families all in their pods out in the outfield to see it, it alive and active. But I will say that the parking, because so many were along the, along the street, because the lots were, were overflowing. So obviously a huge need, but just so exciting to see Golden Eagle up and running and people out there. Uh, and us moving back to a new normal, so I saw the need for parking for sure. And I'm really excited that we've, we've got people that are, will continue to come out there and I think it's a very big need. So, um, thank you, Brian, I'm, and, and then I am ready to make a motion, Mister Mayor, when you are.
Go right ahead.
Okay, let me find it, I just lost it on my phone. Hang on. Okay, sorry, my phone just froze on me. Okay, I might have to have, okay, wait a minute, I got it, okay, sorry, Mister Mayor. Um, I move to approve the construction contract AC five seven five one with West Coast Paving Inc. For the Golden Eagle Regional Park Little League Parking Lot Expansion Project in the amount of five hundred ninety seven thousand three dollars and zero cents.
Okay, looking for a second. This Vander.
Mayor.
Got a second from Vanderwell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, most carries unanimously, okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Okay, nine point one two, consideration discussion of possible approval of an addendum number two to Agreement A three seven six two. For Golden Eagle Recreation Park Concession Services with SBAL LLC. Mister Martini.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council, John Martini, uh, your Assistant City Manager for External Services. Uh, as a matter of background, the council will recall that SBAL LLC is, uh, the entity that's under contract out at Golden Eagle Park. To provide concession services, we have enjoyed that contract with SBAL. Uh, since two thousand and nine and their current contract has been renewed a couple of times and is set to expire in twenty twenty four. Um, obviously, uh, last year presented a kind of a tough year out at Golden Eagle Park. Uh, and in June of twenty twenty, I brought forth, uh, to the council for your consideration, a similar amendment, uh, that. Uh, provided some relief to SBAL, uh, due to the parking shut down and, and not a lot of people out there to buy concessions. Uh, that agreement provided for some waiver of fees and some reduced fees. Uh, we next, never actually really got the park open last year. Uh, but that addendum expired on December, uh, the last day of December of twenty twenty. I was contacted earlier this year, uh, towards the end of February, early March by SBAL again. As the councils were, we, you know, beginning in January up till about March, there, uh, the park remained closed. We weren't doing a lot of activities with the governor loosening some restrictions on adult and youth sports. And the hard work of Mister Pele through business and industry, um, you know, tournaments and, and adult play are returning to Golden Eagle. They started just about a week ago. Uh, sat down with SBAL and the addendum that is before you for your consideration really includes two elements. Uh, the first is a waiver of fees for January, February, March, which makes sense, the park was essentially closed. And then moving forward for the remainder of this year for your consideration is a fifty percent reduction in concessions. Uh, at the time that, uh, we were in negotiations with SBAL, it was unclear as to when social distancing requirements may be, uh, removed. Um, as a requirement for management of the pandemic. Um, in my discussions with, uh, Mister Pele, kind of look at the way things were going. I was hopeful that we could get about, uh, you know, about fifty percent capacity out at Golden Eagle. Uh, that's why you see, uh, you know, half of the rent being negotiated. Of course, there are ongoing discussions, uh, in the region and the state right now about when those restrictions may be lifted. While this addendum does call for the terms to run through the end of this year, which would be the end of December of twenty one. Uh, the addendum also is, uh, can be terminated by either party, um, within thirty days worth of notice. So where I'm going with that is if things suddenly change and we can get the park to, uh, a hundred percent capacity. Uh, we'll have the option to remove this addendum and SBAL will have to go back to full payments. Uh, that's the, that's, uh, in a nutshell, um, my presentation, I'm available if you have any questions, thank you.
Question from the council. This by.
Um, thank you, John, and I think it just makes, uh, makes sense from a business perspective. And us trying to help our businesses as much as we can, uh, wasn't open, so how can we charge them anything for these first three months of the year? And I think, um, I do like the fact that, uh, should we be able to get everything up a hundred percent? That this doesn't lock us in through the end of the year, uh, and the fact that it's fifty percent now. Um, the half rent that they would, uh, would be due to the city, uh, I think is a good negotiated, uh, uh, terms for us. And for Golden Eagle and it's in all of our interest for, uh, Golden Eagle to be open, for those tournaments to start. That economic impact that Gold, uh, Golden Eagle has on our, our region, what over twenty-three million dollars a year. Usually, when there's not a pandemic, uh, is critical. So I think having that open and allowing, uh, you know, working with that concessionaire, uh, I fully, fully support. And I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready, Mister Mayor.
Well, right ahead.
Okay, and I've got it here and ready. Um, I move to approve the addendum number two to Agreement A dash three seven six two. For Golden Eagle Regional Park Concession Services with SBAL LLC.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Mister Dare, um, any further, uh, discussion? Seeing none, although the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, most carries unanimously. Okay, moving on, public hearing and action items are related to planning and zoning. This is a public hearing, consideration possible approval of a collective bargaining agreement. AC five seven five two between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Protective Association. For the period of July one, twenty twenty through June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. For an estimated cost to the city of five hundred seventy six thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty one. And is Alice gonna present this or Neil?
Uh, Neil's, Neil's gonna present this, but I feel like either I missed something, so this might be really embarrassing, or we skipped ahead. Uh, did we pass over nine point one three, our, uh, federal platform?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we did, but you know what, we can go back.
Okay, would, would you want to take this one ten one now and we'll go back, or how do you want to do?
Let's, let's, since, since I read it, let's just go ahead and do it.
Okay, all righty. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the city council, for the record, Neil Crouches, City Manager. I hear with a, a labor contract, uh, for our SPPA, our, our, uh, rank and file, if you will, or non-supervisory police officers. Uh, inside the city, this is for the current fiscal year that we're in, the one that we're about ten and a half months through. Uh, and, uh, like we did with all of our bargaining units this year, we started out trying to negotiate a simple one-year extension. Knowing that we were, we were in COVID, uh, and not knowing a lot of what was, was going to happen to us at the, at. uh, and not knowing a lot of what was, was going to happen to us at the, at the point in time. So we began negotiations with the bargaining unit uh, that was really centered around a couple of things. And that, the first one being a cost of living adjustment. Uh, we negotiated a two point eight percent cost of living adjustment, just like we did with many of our other bargaining units. That's based on the CPI that's appropriate for a city our size in the, in the Western US. And then we also, uh, had conversations around, uh, extending the amount of annual leave that anybody in the, in the bargaining unit could could accrue as a, as a max by adding up to eighty hours, uh, in, at a, to their, to their max, going from a max of four hundred and eighty hours to a total of five hundred and sixty. The large reason behind that comes to that, uh, a lot of our folks had a difficult time in taking annual leave in this last year in, in this time of COVID. So we wanted to give them some, some room to accrue additional, additional leave before they ran into that, the cap there. Uh, the, the conversation very quickly went to two items that were very important to the bargaining unit. Uh, first and foremost was a, a pay step proposal that they brought forward to us. Uh, they, they pointed to some, uh, uh, pay inequities that they, that they observed inside their bargaining unit. We're looking for a way to clean that up. Uh, and then they were also looking for, uh, expanding the sick leave conversion opportunity for members of their, of their unit. Uh, right now, uh, the, the way the contract reads is once you reach twenty years of service with the city, you can convert uh, a percentage starting in year twenty at seventy-five percent and then up to two year twenty-five where you, you had a hundred percent of your unused sick leave for post-retirement healthcare benefits. And, uh, and they were asking us to expand that backwards, if you will, and allow people to start converting that at, at year fifteen. Uh, and the reason they brought that forward to us is that we are seeing more and more of our police officers are laterally into our organization. Uh, otherwise said, they're starting their career with another agency, coming to us with two, three, four, or five years of, of experience. So they're potentially not going to be working a full twenty-five-year police career with, with Sparks PD. And, and wanted to still have that sick leave conversion opportunity for somebody who came to us in mid-year. So they asked us if we would consider, uh, you know, they prorating down rather than going up five percent a year, starting at year twenty. Essentially what they've asked us for is to prorate down at five percent a year to allow us to go back to, uh, to year fifteen. And, and so that would be at year fifteen, they would start with a fifty percent sick leave conversion. Um, so we, we negotiated in, in, in good faith over a series of months. Uh, I want to credit both the human resources and the finance team and doing an awful lot of analytical work to help us understand the potential cost impacts of the four proposals that, uh, that are in front of you today. Uh, it was a, a, a long and arduous process in particular to get through person by person, how the pay step program uh, would, would impact every member of the bargaining unit, uh, and pleased that we were able to land uh, on a mutually agreeable solution that would introduce a total of twelve pay steps into that bargaining unit that would all be separated by two and a half percentage points. Uh, members of that unit would be allowed to earn through the merit review process up to two steps a year so that we would retain the opportunity through, through a merit increase to award somebody a five percent paid increase. Uh, but give, give the bargaining unit, the, the pay step program and, and the, the inequity cleanup that they sought. So I'm very pleased with the, with the work that was done that allowed us to get there. All told, the, the cost in this fiscal year of, of those proposals is, is estimated to be about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And I need to scroll into my staff report to look at a couple of notes I took. About three hundred and ten thousand of those dollars would come, uh, through the two point eight percent cost of living adjustment that is retroactive back to the first, first full pay period of this, of this fiscal year. And then the remaining roughly two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, uh, would, would come to us in terms of implementing that, that pay step program for, for this fiscal year, for, for a total, uh, you know, estimated costs, uh, of about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and, uh, and be happy to try and answer any questions that you have and also take this opportunity to remind you that we do need to hold a public hearing before you consider a, a motion and a vote on this.
Question from council. Okay, seeing none, but this is a public hearing. We're going to open this up to the public, Madam Clerk.
If anybody would like to provide public comment on, on item ten point one, please dial star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom. I'm saying none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public hearing, bring it back to the dice. Uh, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Dare.
Sure, I'll make that motion. I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement AC five seven five two between the City of Sparks, Sparks Police Protective Association for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one for an estimated cost to the city of five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in FY twenty-one.
Okay, looking for a second. Mr. Abbott, second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, vote, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, one, one thing I neglected to do was to thank the members of the negotiating team on the other side of the table, those that represented the SPBA and their, their whole unit, uh, as a whole in voting to approve the tentative agreement that we reached. Uh, we enjoy a, a good issues-based working relationship with them. Uh, we, we have the opportunity to disagree with each other, uh, but still smile, shake hands and, and have a good productive working relationship. And I just want everybody to understand how much I appreciate that. Thank you.
You may bump elbows. Mr. Dare.
I just want to say thank you to the staff too. And I, I didn't want to say that before, but the motion is just, I, I know there's a lot of work goes into these. We read them at the end and get to say yay, but we know a lot of work goes in. So thank you and, uh, appreciate, uh, each of these groups being a part of what we do as a city. Uh, seeing the big picture and being part of it. So good job, staff, and thank you as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, see no more further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Proposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's, now we'll back up and do this in order. Nine point one three, consideration, discussion of possible approval of the City of Sparks, two thousand and twenty-one federal legislative platform. Ms. Allison, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and good afternoon, everyone. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. I'm here before you today seeking the council's approval of the two thousand and twenty-one federal platform. Uh, the city's federal platform guides the city's legislative team and our contract lobbyist Cardinal Infrastructure in advocating for the city with our congressional delegation and before federal agencies. The federal platform is organized into, uh, five key areas in which the city needs federal assistance. Those are the Lands Bill or the Truckee Meadows Public Land Management Act, wastewater infrastructure improvements at Tamworth, regional flood improvements, housing and homelessness, and mental health in Sparks. The federal platform summarizes the problems facing the city in each of those five areas and describes how federal assistance would help the city overcome those problems. Staff does recommend approval of the two thousand and twenty-one federal platform, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from the council. Okay, well, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the, uh, federal legislative platform. Ms. Bybee.
Um, I move to approve the City Sparks, two thousand and twenty-one federal legislative platform. And I would like to comment that uh, these five defined areas are, um, diverse, but they are also really critically important to us. Um, obviously, some of these are, you know, infrastructure or wastewater flood management, housing, which is infrastructure as well. Uh, but the mental health, um, issues here and our public lands, uh, all critically important. And I think the more we can work with, um, the federal government, uh, in, in investing in that and helping us move things forward. But I, I think the staff, I think are, uh, I think Anya and the group back in Washington are lobbyists that are helping us, uh, push this for the city. Uh, have identified just what I, what I feel are really the key, key points that we need assistance in that we, um, are priorities for the city of Sparks. So thank you.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to, motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Proposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I want to second the mental health issue. That's something that we've neglected for far too long in this country and we need to get the federal gov, government involved with it. Okay, that's my editorial for the meeting today. All right, moving on, item eleven point one. Planning and zoning public hearings and action items. This is a second reading, a public hearing, discussion of possible adoption of bill number two seven eight two, in ordinance to, uh, amend the final approved plan for the Legends at Sparks Marina located on the side of approximately a hundred forty-eight acres in size, generally situated north of IAD, south of Prater and west of Sparks Boulevard in Sparks, Nevada in the New Urban District Legend that Sparks Marina zoning district. To modify the application of certain standards related to signs and revised development standards and landscaping requirements associated with the buffer wall along the western boundary of the site, it's, which is PCN twenty dash zero zero four seven, PD twenty dash zero 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 six. There we go. There, uh, Danny, are you going to present this for us? Or are you going to, you have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay, apologize. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the city council. My name is Dani Ray, uh, planner for this project. And let me share my screen with you. Let's see, here we go. Okay. Alrighty, now do you see the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's see if it changes. Just one moment. I had it all ready to go and it now seemed to share it. Huh. Okay. Okay. So for the record, like you said, I'm Dani Ray, and, uh, this request is to amend the Plan Development Handbook, Legends at Sparks Marina Destination Retail Development to modify the application of certain standards related to the application of signs in the landscaping requirements associated with the buffer wall along the western boundary of the site. Going forward, I will, uh, refer to the Legends Handbook as handbook. Okay. I apologize, I'm going to shut this down and restart. Um, it was ready to go. And now it's not. So I'm going to close that. Okay. There we go. Okay. Okay. So. There we go. Yeah, I apologize. So the site's generally located northwest of the Sparks Boulevard and IAD interchange and east of Sparks Marina Park on approximately a hundred and forty-eight acre site in the NUD, New Urban District, the Legends at Sparks Marina zoning district. For a little bit of background, the city council originally approved the handbook in two thousand and six. And as some of you may recall, the city council most recently amended the handbook this past September, revising development standards for movie theater signs. It's important to note that no sign dimensions for the Legends PD are proposed to change. Only how the existing allowed sign dimensions are applied to leasable tenant space. In other words, the leasable area thresholds have been reduced, allowing for more tenant spaces to have the larger allowed signage for both wall and marquee signs. For example, the photo on the left illustrates the current development standards for wall signs for currently classified small shop tenants, which is thirty inches in height, while the photo on the right.
Interrupted, Danny, but, uh, your screen is not sharing.
Uh. Okay. Is it sharing now?
Yeah, I can see PCN twenty dash zero zero four seven.
Well, let me bump ahead a little bit. So you did not see this particular?
No, but I'm sure we know where Legends is.
You know where Legends is, yes, okay. Um, so, uh, this slide right here has a slight classification thresholds on it. Um, so again, the leasable area thresholds have been reduced, allowing for more tenant spaces to have the larger, um, allowed signage. And the photo on the left illustrates the current, uh, development standard for thirty inches in height. Uh, while the photo on the right shows a mock-up of the same tenant space reclassified as the sub-major tenant, allowing the currently allowed forty-eight inches in height wall sign. Currently, there are a total of sixty-four small shops and eight sub-major tenants, and the revised standards were ultimately only impact six existing and two future retail tenant spaces or eleven percent of the total spaces at the site. This request also seeks to modify the location and amount of landscaping associated with the buffer wall along the western side of the site that separates commercial uses in the Legends Plan Development from adjacent residential uses in the Marina Plan Development and to codify an existing condition. The north section of the wall shown on the map in green will be located on the east side of Windsurfer Drive, south of Lincoln Way and down to Bay Shore Drive. The south section of the buffer wall shown here in purple is located on the east side of Windsurfer Drive also, but is between Bay Shore Drive and the Residence Inn by Marriott. The handbook currently specifies that a landscaping buffer be a minimum of ten feet in width on the residential side. The handbook also currently requires a landscaping buffer on the east or commercial side of the buffer wall, but does not prescribe a required dimension of width. This is a cross-section of the north section of the buffer wall that will reside on the east edge of Windsurfer Drive, showing the currently required tense, uh, ten-foot landscape buffer on the street side of the wall with an optional five-foot sidewalk that is proposed to be included within that ten-foot area. To the right of the wall is a proposed five-foot landscape buffer on that commercial side. Now, this is a cross-section of the wall that resides on the east edge of Harbor Cove Court in the existing canal. The existing wall separates the commercial uses, uh, such as the Residence Inn by Marriott, from the residential uses to the west. Shown is the proposed elimination of the requirement for landscaping on the west side of the wall, instead proposing the minimum ten-foot landscaping buffer on the commercial side. Because of a past staff error, when originally permitting the wall that exists today, the wall was placed on the property line. Therefore, landscaping cannot be easily placed on the adjacent property, especially given that the residents have indicated to the developer that the landscaping is unwanted because of public access concerns. This concludes the discussion portion of my presentation. I'm now going to transition over to the ten required findings, which I've grouped together to take advantage of some similar categories. Supporting goals MG two and CC one and finding PDA modifications to the leasable area thresholds for small shop and sub-major tenant spaces for the purposes of signage allocation. Permit flexibility for local businesses by fostering diversity in the commercial land use mix. The modifications further support goal EV four by enhancing the shopping center's placemaking elements, identifying tenant spaces and incentivizing the retention and attraction of Legends Plan Developments businesses. As proposed, the modifications to the location of required landscaping will promote continued compatibility between residential and commercial uses, also supporting goals MG two and CC one. The landscaping of walls serve the entire plan development and the public by providing a buffer between commercial and residential uses. The modified sign classifications also serve the entire plan development and the public by providing for easy identification of tenants of the Legends Shopping Center, supporting finding PDI. And for finding PDC, a fiscal analysis was not required with this amendment because there are no proposed changes to densities or types of land uses. PDD, PDF and PDH, by furthering the mutual interest of residents and owners, the proposed modifications to sign standards will assist with placemaking and tenant space identification within the Legends Development. In addition, the proposed modifications to the landscaping required along the west In addition, the proposed modifications to the landscaping required along the west wall are not anticipated to adversely affect adjacent residential uses as the changes increase the landscaping required on the north section of the wall. And the south section reflects the as built condition south of Bay Shore Drive. There are no proposed changes to the land uses permitted by the handbook, and the proposed amendment will not impair the reliance upon the provision of the Legends Handbook, supporting findings PDD, PDF, PDH, and PDE. Public notice was given as required by the Sparks Municipal Code and Nevada Revised Statutes, and the Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as the public hearings for this item. This request was noticed at a minimum to all owners of property within the Legends Plan Development and within seven hundred and fifty feet of the Legends Plan Development boundary. A total of one hundred and six notices were mailed to property owners on January twenty first, and public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March twenty fourth, after the first reading of the bill on March twenty second. Staff has not received any public comment as of today. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this amendment at their February fourth, twenty twenty one meeting. On this slide is suggested motion should the City Council choose to approve this amendment. This concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I forgot I muted myself. All right, question from the council. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. All right, is this a public hearing? Oh, that's true, public hearing. Let me, Madam Clerk, just put this out to public.
If anybody would like to participate in public comment for item number eleven point one, please dial star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom. We'll give them just a moment. And I'm showing none.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the dice. Now I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I move based on findings PDA through PDJ as set forth in staff report to adopt bill number two, seven, eight, two, an ordinance to amend the final approved plan for Legends at Sparks Marina to modify the application of certain standards related to signs and revise the development standards and landscaping requirements associated with the buffer wall along the western boundary of the site.
Okay, looking for a second. Second by councilman there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, although the favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate your time. All right, moving on, twelve point one, comments from the public, Madam Clerk.
If anybody would like to participate in general public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to item twelve point two, comment from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Any comments? What? All right, well, then we're moving on to my favorite agenda item, item thirteen. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.